Being going to the clocks, I guess I'll record to the clock. I'd say I justify that. Well, it's now seven oh six on this Tuesday, the
Six oh six?
Nine, yeah, the ninth of September of two zero two five and we're gonna call the meeting together. In the room currently is Michael Di Socio, Matt Basler, I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Bachler.
Bachler.
It's a tricky one.
From Wyndham Regional Commission. And then there's myself, Stan Noga. Uh, it's unlikely that um Leah Daly will be able to attend today and uh, John Harris is hoping to tune in sometime very soon, so uh, we'll see. So uh, so the meeting was formed together at that hour. Are there any requests for changes from the agenda that was mailed to participants a few days ago? Then we hear nothing. So then we'll go to item number three, which is review draft minutes of the last committee, committee meeting. Uh, they were sent to the uh uh what's that site that? Um, well, the Google site, Google Doc site. Uh, I did read them. Uh, I did manage to print them out. Uh, uh, did anyone have any comments, Mike? On the content of them?
I do not, I do not have any comments or comments, just notes.
Okay, I similarly had no problem with the content. Uh, and uh, therefore, I, I guess I will make a motion to approve them as submitted, even though we don't have a form, but
Uh, maybe with, maybe we should postpone the approval of this.
Okay. Well, we could, we could table that. That's not a bad idea.
It's technically, I guess.
Yeah, you're right. You're absolutely correct. I should have, I should have thought that myself. Uh, we're gonna table approval of these minutes because we do not have a formal form here at the meeting today.
If John comes in, we could still do it later.
Correct. Director Don Disman, as you may have heard, uh, Mike say that we could run formal motion to accept them as presented, assuming that he has no uh, comment or changes to make. Uh, the next item was the introduction of Matt Bachler. Backwater Bachler, if I say that.
Bachler.
Okay, from Wyndham Regional, he's a senior planner there, if my understanding is correct. He's kind enough to attend this evening and give us the necessary guidance we need to proceed and and finalize this process hopefully in the appropriate time frame. So uh, I know we've sent a number of uh, questions to, to Matt and asked him to send us supporting documentation. He's been wonderful on doing that. We have pretty much everything to include a, a list of things that he indicated that are required according to twenty four V S A forty three eighty seven, uh, which had a nice list of the overall things and a, a little explanation associated with that list. So uh and then, and then uh, there was a little slight discussion up uh not, not in an open meeting, just general chatter and, and there was a, the, the item about finance, uh, with dollar amounts for different levels of assistance and and that implies on the part of the Wyndham Regional Representative and, and members of this committee. So without any further ado, unless there's something else pending, I would like to ask Matt to give us a brief and uh, see where we go.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Stan.
Yep.
Um, and I, I don't have a formal presentation. I thought I would just run through the email I had sent to you, Stan, and it looks like
Yep.
you've got to um, so just to take a step back to, so as you know, your town plan, um, you need to kind of revisit it every eight years, expires every eight years. And your plan is set to expire in March twenty twenty six. Um, and you know, I think as, I think it's important for the town to first just think about, you know, how is the the existing plan working for the town and um you know, have you come across issues with the current plan over the last eight years since the town plan was last updated? Um, because often it's the case that the town plan is a pretty solid document and you don't need to do extensive updates to it, just because it expires every eight years, doesn't mean you need to kind of start from scratch with the town plan. So I think understandably, uh, communities, sometimes when they are approaching that eight year deadline, they think, oh, boy, we have to, you know, open this whole thing up and start over and but if, if it's a document that's been working pretty well, um, really, you're just thinking about it as reviewing it and making tweaks in areas that, you know, things have changed obviously in eight years and um, you know, the community has been in, I know Brookline was impacted by the July twenty twenty three floods. There are changes too probably in just community facilities, changes in demographics, things like that. So you wanna um, make updates to the plan to reflect what's happened in the last eight years and change in community priorities, but um, you know, planning is a, it's an iterative process, so we're always building on that planning efforts. Um, so I, that, that's just kind of what I always recommend towns. So don't, yeah. Think about it as building on your current plan. So, um, so and, and thinking about re-adopting your plan, um the email that I provided just covers the, the basic requirements under statute for re-adopting plans. So you do need to do some work um, versus just re-adopting it as is and making no changes. Um, but the process and statute for re-adopting a plan um is really, it, it still involves some reviewing and updating of the plan. So um so the first, and I kind of you know, pulled from statute in this email with this bullet point list and then tried to provide an explanation for it because uh, stat, in statute, it's very kind of short and concise about what you're required to do. Um, the first thing is updating the information the plan is based on. So that would include a big, a big um, component of that is um, updating the background community profile data. So just the information you have in your plan about how many people live in Brookline and age characteristics and number of housing units. How many units are second homes versus full-time residents, economic characteristics, things like that. How many additional housing units have been built over the last eight years? Um, so it includes that information. Um, it also that updating the information the plan is based on, that would also include, um, as I was mentioning, if there are any uh like changes in terms of your community facilities, if there you know, any changes in terms of, I know, um you know, Brookline hasn't been constructing new roads or anything like that, but if there are things like that, like your community is constructing new roads, you'd want that background information to be included in the, in the plan update. Um, so it's also an opportunity for the town to meet with um different town officials to go over the town plan and ask, you know, your road agent, members of the select board. Um, I'm not familiar with kind of the full scope of committees that Brookline has, um, that might want to do you have a conservation commission or anything like that, or outside of the planning commission, do you involve any kind of standing? That's a planning commission.
We never, we, we, I don't believe we ever have.
Yeah.
I, I moved here and um eighty eight and there, I don't believe there's then even such other committees other than
Yeah.
planning. It's been looking at the list of different participants rattled or needed in yesterday's paper.
Yeah.
You know, they've got a lot when we that few people to pick from to fill
Right.
about a four hundred and twenty people. So
Right.
it's a, it's put a, a damper on number of participants in general and the number of committees that we have.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a couple of names that come from my jump. I, we have a meet, what's called a meeting house committee.
Okay.
And that, because we have a, we have a historical building, they, they basically manage the events
Yep.
and the use of that building.
Mm-hmm.
And can uh all of it rolled up to flag boys for, for decision making, but they, they advise.
They're advising.
Uh, in the cemetery commission is
There is a cemetery commission. It seems like the people had a vote it very often.
Yeah, they do. They, they may do something once a year because a lot of
Yeah.
They have an orderly meeting if I, I understand. It's a orderly semi-annual.
Okay.
So there's some activity there, but it's not anything that really affects the planning
Yeah.
in terms of what we, as town officials might, might, but it, but it is an
There's a standing committee and
Right.
only have an audit committee?
Well, yes, and that only is active come to the meeting.
Yeah.
Once a year, yeah, for a short duration.
Yeah.
We have any other committees or commissions?
There's a committee for the round schoolhouse over here.
Yeah.
Uh, so, and that, it was few in number and I don't believe they meet very often.
Yeah.
I think we have a separate committee for the former school that now is, is used as a daycare, which somehow will be used as a daycare. Which may be part of a
Yeah.
considerable issue for town planning.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Well, we have one, you know, aside from some agricultural use, we have uh, fire and something, it's a mental treatment, a mental health treatment center up off of Parker Road. Uh it's five oh three C, one, one or something like that.
Okay.
Um, so, and that's our major business. There've been some concern about some of the participants of that facility in terms of usage that
Yeah.
go down into the community. So there's a little bit of a issue of concern there on some partisan people, but
Yeah.
overall, it's not really
But they're not a committee or commission, right?
Right.
No, no, they're not. That's, I think, what might affect planning. Yeah. There's no, it has no commission for that. It's just a
Yeah.
a privately owned entity.
And we, and I know that we, I had sent the um, the updated community data that we pulled together.
Yeah.
Um, and that was just a, in an Excel spreadsheet. So you, and that's kind of the standard data that we provide for towns, and that's just part of our core
Yep.
services that we provide to towns. So um, so really, it's, and this is another question. Um, this is one area where like W R C could support the planning commission. Of just going through the, the plan and updating the data in the plan, like integrating it in the plan and providing some narrative to, because it's helpful to obviously provide context for the data and just
Yeah, I, I personally think that would be helpful.
Yeah.
It's fun create, right? You, you can pull it, you know, with a pull your data. I'm guessing some of the data you wouldn't have, but the town between the town clerk, sitting with the town clerk, you should be able to get most of what's town-specific that you wouldn't otherwise be able to access.
Yep, yeah. So, yeah.
Towns, we could, we could also, you could all fall, fall back on us, but I think the town clerk being
Yeah.
would be a good place to go.
Yeah.
Then we could, I like the idea of us reviewing it rather than being entirely, we can compile it, we have to, but I like the idea of us reviewing that.
I've been breaking it out into the, what is going to require research, investigation?
Yeah.
question and answer and what's, I'm gonna use a very derogatory term, but grunt work.
Yeah.
You know, to me, the putting in the numbers and so forth is grunt work.
Yep.
And so the question becomes, uh, what, what do you witness in other towns in terms of their function versus the U
Yeah.
W R C function?
Yeah.
Which is more important?
Yeah.
You getting that more intense data from people or uh, is, is it something that you would assign to citizens to do the grunt work because you need to do that investigative and answer and question and answer card. So I, I don't know how to answer the question, I guess, or the
Yeah. Yeah, and it, so in every town is different. You know, some planning commissions are comfortable and excited about uh, doing that sort of grading. Um, like if they're not subtracting the less at all, like there are towns that do the whole town plan update process on their own, and that's
That's the question about that?
Yeah.
Yeah, as we go through this, help me understand. Yeah. We do, yeah, we do everything. We have hired, we have employees in planning department.
Yeah.
That's a big difference between a hundred percent volunteer.
Yeah, no, certainly. Um, it is different, right, for, for those towns. I mean, there are towns, there are towns that, I don't you know, are still a little larger than Brookline that, that don't have any planning. So they do it, they, they do it. Um but I understand it, it, they might have, you know, they might have a full commission with five active members and it's just, it's different and it's different every eight years too. I mean, I, it just so happens at that eight-year cycle, they have a very active planning commission and maybe in eight years they only have a handful, they only have two members that, and so it, it, it changes.
And maybe they don't have
Yeah.
any other jobs like stand up right in town and sit five other jobs or whatever, you know, maybe.
Exactly.
Maybe they just stay up all night doing the stuff. So
But most, yeah, and um, so I think and I think for Brookline, because we have the March, you know, the March twenty twenty six, and your plan is, is expiring, and as you know, planning commission has to hold a hearing, provide thirty days' notice, and then the select board has to wait at least thirty days before they hold their hearing. Um, so if you had a draft of the plan done January first, the planning commission will hold a public hearing February first, and then the select board could not hold a hearing until March first, just kind of rough, rough dates. Um, and so you, you need to kind of you know, schedule in sixty days from when the plan is done uh, to when the select board could consider adopting it. Um, and so and it's, it's not, it's not the end of the world to have an expired town plan. I mean, the main repercussions are, I know Brookline doesn't have zoning for towns with zoning, you can't update your zoning. Um, if you have an expired town plan, the zoning is still in effect. Um, and then the other thing is there might be repercussions if there was an Act two fifty permit in town and you had an expired town plan. There might be some repercussions there. Um, so it's, you know, it's good practice to, you know, have an expired town plan, but if you're a week, if you're adopting a plan a week after it expires, it'll be okay. Yeah, yeah. Um, but I think um, just in thinking about this as kind of a re-adoption of the plan, um like, I, I wouldn't imagine W R C um, doing intensive research, um, just because and the more you dig into it, the more time that's involved and the budget constraint and the time constraint, because if we're if we had a goal of wrapping this up by the end of the year, which if it's just a re-adoption, that's definitely doable. Um, so I just you know, certainly there'll be some research involved, but a lot of it will be um visible. Yeah, a lot of the, a lot of the stuff in plan is probably, you know, not gonna need to be updated significantly. Um and um but we can kind of, as we kind of go through this, we can maybe get a better sense, I, I can get a better sense of areas that might need to be updated based on just what's been happening in the community. Um so that's kind of, that's the first item is the updating the background information, and that's more more the grunt work. Um, I do think it's helpful, um, because um, a lot of this just involves updating just background information about the town. That's where I think it's helpful for either the planning commission or the select board to just um, have like, maybe it's at a select board meeting, have the road, and then I'm not sure what Brookline has for a road agent or road commissioner.
Wheels and highway commissioner, wherever.
Road commissioner and highway superintendent.
Yeah.
But that's my imagination failing.
Yeah, so maybe just inviting them to attend a select board meeting and like going over what's in the town plan at a high level. Um you know, the transportation prior chapter is probably just a couple pages long. Um, and asking them to just read through that and provide feedback on if there's anything major in there and it needs to get updated. Um like, that's a pretty straightforward thing that the town, town can do, and it's, I think it's easier for the town to do that. I, I mean, certainly could meet with town staff too, but it can just be easier to, because often they're attending a slumber meeting anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um but definitely um just actually updating the data and kind of updating the narrative in the town plan about the data. That's something we can, we could do for, for the town. Um, the second item is consider the recommendations from the regional planning commission provided during the last town plan review process. Um, and I think, did I provide you with a copy?
I have, I have, yes.
Um.
We have the review that was done and I have a plan that was done in twenty eighteen, I guess it was, or twenty seventeen.
Yeah, so, so the plan had met all the statute requirements um, in twenty eighteen. So the state, the state has requirements about what needs to be included in your plan, and then the plan also needs to um be working towards achieving statewide planning goals. So
Are you talking about the regional plan now or our plan?
Um, the Brookline's town plan. Um, so towns uh, can ask the regional planning commission to approve their town plan. Um, you're not required to, um, but all of our, all of our towns that have town plans um, do get that approval from Wyndham Regional. So we, we approved your last town plan excuse me, in um, May of twenty eighteen. And in that process, we we are responsible for confirming that you have all the required components of a plan.
And Wyndham Regional just updated that, right?
And so, yeah.
Within the last two months, maybe, I think it was. I remember you making a strong lengthy presentation
Oh.
uh, not that long ago about it.
For the, sorry, for the regional plan or for the, for the
I believe it was for the, for the regional plan.
Yeah, yeah. So right, because we're looking for part of that review process is to make sure that your plan is compatible with our regional plan, um, which there, there wouldn't be any issue with that for a fine plan. Um but when we do our review of the town plan, we also provide recommendations, so they're not requirements. Um, so the last time we looked at the town plan, um, some of our recommendations were um, strengthening some of the policy language, so using shall instead of should. So if you, if you had a project that required state review under Act two fifty, if you have shall in your town plan, that's gonna have greater weight than if you say should or consider. So that was a recommendation from us of just strengthening some of the policy language. And then
But what is our action step? It says consider recommendations. Okay.
So
In the last plan, okay, so we, so we look at the recommendations. Then what?
So score ourselves at the end of the day. I mean, at the end of the day, to be frank, at the end of the day, all you have to do is consider them. You don't have to do anything. You don't have to change your plan based on our recommendations. So um it's, it's really um part of our town plan review processes for our staff to provide kind of our professional input on how to make the town plan stronger the next time around. Um, but it's, it's, uh, it's up to the town whether or not um, you you uh, kind of implement what we're recommending. So and, and the other recommendation from us was strengthening the implementation plan. Now you have, at the end of each chapter, you have recommendations for um, for action steps the town could take uh, to implement things within that chapter. And I, and I understand for a town like Brookline, it's a very small town, it's for a larger community is having an implementation plan when you have more staff, you can assign things to. It's just, it's, it's an understandable challenge where it's um I, I think it's, you know, it's something to consider, but I understand in a lot of towns do what Brookline does. I mean, they don't, yeah.
Well, you know, it's interesting. So the main recommendation sounds like
Yeah.
have a, was policy of strengthen the policies and have an, maybe have an implementation plan.
Yeah.
But if the main recommendation is policy of strengthening.
Yeah.
I know that maybe I didn't understand this at the time, but um Doc was always bringing forward policies to review and update.
Hmm.
When I first come onto the picture.
Yeah.
Maybe this is why. I didn't understand why at the time, what might have been the driver.
Yeah.
That might have been the driver.
Okay, that would make sense.
But uh if, if the, if you only have one action step, update the plans, I guess you would, the implementation would be, she used to do like do two or three a month.
Yeah.
Maybe that's what this is all about.
Yeah, and I think um my recommendation too, like if, if a town is not sure, say wanna like include an implementation plan in their town plan, the, the select board and planning commission could also just meet after you've adopted the town plan and review the recommendations and just have a discussion about what do we want to work on? And it's not
No, but we, in our current town plan, don't we have some sort of a schedule in the back? That was, that looks like a, a work plan or an implementation plan. We will update this by this time.
I think there is.
Okay.
At least there is.
There's been risks for things.
I'm not, not saying we've done it.
We've had to look at and address for one reason or not, how do we make stronger, better, if you're proud of it.
There, I think there's some trouble, there's a bit in there.
You have to admit, my schedule has been such that we haven't over the last two months looked at that.
Yeah.
About to enter our timeframe and hopefully um personal things will not be as, that tying up, up like to me as much. So
Yeah.
Um
Um, and so then the third item is engage in community outreach and involvement and updating the plan. So I, I know you've done a community survey pretty recently. And statute, statute doesn't define, you know, what that minimum requirement is for community outreach and involvement.
Mm-hmm.
So the survey, county comfortable with that, the survey again. If you are reviewing that and incorporating the feedback into the plan, that is sufficient. Um, so I just had here that you could consider doing a public meeting to to present the findings of the survey and solicit additional input. Um if you feel like the survey provided useful feedback, um, the planning commission is also gonna hold a public hearing. And that's an opportunity too to present kind of the updates that you're proposing to the plan, um, and what you heard in the survey. So you can kind of do a public hearing, sound, it's, you know, sounds very formal and official, but you could also make that into just a larger public meeting where you do a presentation and
Mm-hmm.
that's still officially a public hearing, but um so that's, that's some, kind of know your thoughts on on that. Um
So I have a reaction to it.
Yeah.
Uh, so I, I remember, I don't remember all the questions in the survey.
Yeah.
I remember distinctly one of the major messages that came out of the survey was we want the town to stay unchanged.
Yeah.
And, and then it gets dicey.
Yeah.
Because people would, some people would say
Yeah.
um uh, well the way you keep the town unchanged is don't create any rules.
Yep.
Leave me alone.
Yeah.
And other people would say the way you keep the town the same is you create rules.
Yeah.
So that people can't go up and do whatever they feel like.
Yeah.
Um, and so like zoning, right? So zoning, so, so uh, that would be something to get more clarification from people in town, but also it's called, from what I've learned offline, it's a very volatile issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Many towns.
It is, yeah, because Brookline's not the only town without zoning in our area and there are rare, strong opinions on both sides about it. Um, and yeah, I think
But those same people.
Yeah.
I think for the most part, I, my impression, I mean, the same people would say they have the same goal.
Yes.
You know, want the town to stay
Yeah.
kind of the way that we like it the way it is, we really don't want it to change.
Yeah.
But yet some people don't want zoning because they want some right, they want to be able to do what they want.
Right.
Okay, which isn't assistive with that, but, but anyway.
Yeah, and I think um I think my recommendation would be just because it can be it can be kind of a heated discussion as to
Hmm.
uh, keep that, have a separate conversation after, you know, you can update the town plan and then you could if you want, I know Guilford, a couple, a couple of years ago, I If you want, I know Guilford a couple, a couple of years ago, I. Because Guilford also does not have zoning, I did a, just a. Presentation at their planning commission meeting, and I invited members to the public just to. Present just an overview of what the zone is and. You know, why they might wanna, if they wanna. Preserve the town the way it is, why they might wanna have just some basic zoning regulations, nothing over the top, but. Well, if you don't have those regulations in place, then, you know, technically, it. Someone could do, you know, just buy anything with like, uh, state permits and it might be something the community really doesn't wanna see, but I think. Those local regulations in place, you can't do anything about it, but, um.
But anyway, that's what's kind of came out of the survey that we did was, keep the town the same, what's there anything else major that you recall?
Mm-hmm.
A lot of people who wanted recreation, I was surprised at the number who did bring up. The suggestion of implementing zoning, because they, as you say, uh, having been here thirty some odd years, it's. Well, twenty, forty, close to forty, and, uh, there was a time when you, you were at risk of losing your life if you brought up zoning.
Yeah.
That's changed, so.
Yeah.
You know, the, it's, it's interesting, as, as the older population. The, the children move on and the property sells and so forth, the, the people coming in seem to have a familiarity with zoning and that. It appears to be a more acceptable and thinking.
Yeah.
But, but again, that's.
Yeah.
Something to be breached later down the road.
Yeah, and I think it's important to remember, um. Yeah, you're, if the town ever considered zoning, the town plan is. Basis for your zoning, so especially the land use chapter where you have your future land use map and you talk about. The types of uses and intensity of development, you wanna see in different parts of town. That's not zoning, but it's, it's in your town plan and it's kind of, it's getting towards zoning, so I think. Uh, even though the town plan, right, the town plan is in zoning, like the, the work that you're doing and updating to, and because, um, will provide a basis.
I guess, but in, in, if we talk about a minimalistic approach.
Yeah.
Then I would say we have a survey.
Yes.
Maybe we would consider saying, that's the, that's the community outreach for this minimalist approach.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's in.
Yeah, 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 and I think, um. One thing that W R C could do is, um. Just, you know, do a quick review of the survey and kind of provide a, you know, summary of it to, um. Kind of trying to distill like what are the.
Sure.
You know, big takeaways and, um. And I could see that kind of. Being a role for us to, like, what are the big takeaways and, um.
Mm-hmm.
What policies might eighteen, eighteen, based on what you saw in the survey, but I think her goal is to do minimal, then that. Use the survey as your. So then the next one is, um, just to make sure that it's. Consistent, your plan is consistent with the, um. Statewide planning goals and that it includes all the required plan elements, um, so. The twenty eighteen plan, that, um. That all those requirements, um. And. Between twenty eighteen and today. There's. I'm just trying to. Think if they're really happening, any changes.
That will be something that you could, I think you could.
Yeah.
Quickly go through that.
Yeah.
Say, do, yeah, yes, no, no, where's the gap?
Yeah.
Help interpret that easier than we.
Yeah, it's pretty, if there's anything that's pretty minimal. But that's same thing, yeah. And then, okay, evaluate the plan for. Internal consistency among plan elements, goals, objectives and community standards, so. I just made a note here that, you know, this is where it can take more time, um, so this is. You know, based on, um. Based on. All these other steps we've kind of gone through, like you're updating your background information, you're doing community engagement, um. Based on that, um, what are the areas in the plan that need to be dated, like, do you have? Policy or goal on there that, uh, is really in conflict with where the community is today, um. I can't imagine there's anything in there that's gonna be way, way off base, um, but, um. Yeah, I'm just.
Well, this, yeah, okay, so maybe to, that's. I think of two different things, because you said consistently with, among plan elements, so, you know, th- does chapter two contradict?
Yeah.
What we're saying in chapter ten.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, which is separate, different things than saying, okay, chapter two says X and you know.
Yeah.
There's a fight going on, you know what he wants chapter two anymore to say what it says.
Yeah.
Uh, so. Which would require a little bit more.
Right.
Power.
Yeah.
Looking the first one.
Yeah.
If you had somebody read through it.
Yeah.
That would be, they would be a good test because they're not, they're objective, they're not. But the second part would be, is there something in there that we know everybody hates?
Yeah. Yeah.
Then that might be something we do.
Yeah, yeah, and I think that's, that's a good point, and I think that's where. That's where it's, um. You know, I can make recommendations when it comes to the policy language and things like that, and it's. That's where it's very helpful to get the input from the planning commission, that's more on, right, those policy decisions, um. Cause I can, you know, update all the data and, um, all that, no problem, but, you know, I'm not in a position to.
No.
Yeah.
I just throw this over, uh, since you guys already reviewed our plan.
Yeah.
The old plan.
Yeah.
Theoretically, you've had a little bit of a bite at that apple.
Yeah.
If you saw something that was, hey, this, two doesn't line up with ten.
Mm-hmm.
You would have already.
Right, exactly.
To us, so it, so two probably lines up with ten.
Yeah.
But w- maybe way out of date is.
Yeah.
Section two says something we definitely aren't gonna do, or, or, or.
Yeah.
Nobody wants us to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, uh, that's probably what we.
Yeah.
Wanna opine on, right?
Yeah.
Sounds logical.
Read through it, because.
Yeah.
I know you'd look at something, you'd have opinions about, oh, we've drifted away from that, I might have some idea.
Yeah. Yeah. And I can imagine, you know, you're just, cause I've worked with a few towns over the last several years on. Um, like bigger town plan update projects and a lot of where like the language has changed is around. Um, flood concerns, flood resiliency and around housing and. Most of the other policies and goals have stayed, there's been a lot of, like, similar to Brookline, there's been a lot more interest in recreation. Um, like, people looking for new shapes of recreational opportunities to, um, but. Just from my experience working with other towns, like housing and flood resilience are the big, understandably the big things right now, wow.
Well, flood maps are, are going to change.
Yeah.
And what's coming out each year was significantly, virtually every, most of the properties long grassy for growth will be in some kind of.
Hmm.
Flood plane of sorts and, uh, you know, it's gonna bring changes that. I'm not sure how we will deal that and make consistent with the current plan or interface it with the current plan.
Yeah, so, you just updated the hazard mitigation plan, which is mostly about the flooding, it's got other risk in the tooth.
Yeah.
But, but, I, I'm with you, the flooding.
Yeah.
With, I don't think we're so ki- worried about housing in this town of being flooded.
Yeah.
So I would see where we take the fresh hazard mitigation plan, the flood section in there.
Yeah.
Cut and paste.
Mm-hmm.
The couple of sections in there.
Yeah.
To be clocked into the.
Yeah.
The town plan, or, or maybe the whole thing on flooding, pop it in there. And eliminate anything else that it says, or, you know, about, and we'd have. We'd have consistency.
Yeah.
We've already gone through a lot of reviews and.
Yeah.
And processes to get there.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, yeah, we're always currently deciding, you're not indicative of a, a, a big building boom at this time. And frankly, the amount of land that's available, although there's a lot of blank spaces or empty spaces, I, I don't see there being. A, a drastic.
Yeah.
In housing development in, in the town.
Yeah.
Flood resilience, the two topics would be the one that.
Yeah.
Uh, it's gonna be, bring some discussion and need for discussion.
Yeah.
And with the, the fact that I guess there, there is, uh, I forget which act is it, one eighty-one.
Mm-hmm.
It's going to require.
Yeah.
Uh, actual flood plan administrators in each town, are you gonna lose the ability to utilize FEMA? There are changes that are gonna have to happen there, and that enforcement, I, that's gonna be a biggie, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, um. But I think. Yeah, I mean, that's one about. I don't, I don't think, I don't see this being, um, a lot of work on our end, um. Yeah.
No.
Yeah, I mean, taking direction from planning commission and then we can, you know, draft changes, but I think. And it's common for towns to, uh, take along from their local hazard mitigation plan for the flood resilience. Section of their town plan, because they, right, they're, they're just on all that work in great detail for the hazard mitigation plan.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, and then, so addressing compatibility. With, I think I have a typo here. Address compatibility with the regional plan and approved plans adjoining municipalities, so. This, you have it in your plan, this is. Something we can easily do, I mean, this takes, you know. To, to me.
That's a W R C sec.
That's.
You guys, you guys look at the surrounding plan, tell us where you think is inconsistent, where you need to be adjusted.
So that's a very easy thing for, but we'll do to take off your fleet, you know, I mean, so. Uh, so that one's.
I mean, we can do some of it if we want, but, you know, if you, if you have a lot of interest in that, Stan, you like reading all those things.
Yeah.
I would say, just tell me where they're inconsistent, because, you know.
No, and, and generally, there's. And then the last one, establish a program and schedule for implementing the plan, so this is. Kind of what we talked about earlier, like our recommendation was to have a stronger implementation plan. You have a, I know the, the town plan, um. Includes, as I mentioned, recommendations at the end of each chapter, and then I, I believe too, you have a. A section towards the end that just talks about. Like in broad strokes, how you would implement the plan, um. That, uh, just includes like some main strategies.
That we would look, I, I would, to your help.
Yeah.
Help organize that.
Yeah.
Take what you're hearing and, and.
Yeah.
Organize it for us.
Yeah. But I don't, I don't think that would be a lot of work, because you, you already have recommendation, recommended action steps. Part of the, this update process is. Reviewing those, making, you know, maybe there's some things you can cross off the list that have been done, um. Maybe there's some new actions that you wanna include, um.
We had discussed or. Kind of agreed that putting, um, the fire plan into a word. Microsoft Word format.
Yeah.
In Google Docs would enable different people to work on it.
Yeah.
And, and therefore, uh, everyone be privy to what's been changed.
Mm-hmm.
And then the ability to contact that person and or discuss the issue. Is that something that.
Yeah.
Uh, in terms of the practicalness of doing that, that you would be able to interface with, or. Is there another methodology that you would, you would suggest? Uh, you know, at, at, at some point, we're gonna have to say.
Yeah.
You specifically do this and you specifically do that.
Yeah.
And it's. Does that mechanism work as a possible, how have you elsewhere?
So, what I, what I've done with other towns is, um. Always worked in a Word document, so maybe, hopefully, there's a Word document. Version of your town plan, we can also. If there's just a PDF, you can convert it to a Word document, which then can create some.
Well, Leah already, Leah already took the town plan a long time ago, converted it to a Word document.
Yes, and she, she redid that recently and it's in our Google Docs folder on the town.
Yeah.
The town, uh, well, the connection, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if you have access to that, or if we can give you access to that somehow, some way.
You should be able to give me access, um. What I, usually what I do is, I will. Make, um, redlined edits, like you can track changes in a Word document.
Uh-huh.
And. Share that with the planning commission for, you know, at least a few days before your meeting, um. And, and then, um, right, attend a meeting, go over the. Don't propose edits, get feedback, and then make changes, um, I have worked with one town where. We did put, um. The draft chapters in a, in a Google Drive, like as Google documents, and then planning commissioners made comments. In the Google document, um. So personally, I. I find it a little challenging to manage Google documents, um. And I, I have a concern too, sometimes of like. You know, if someone, you know, accidentally makes edits to it, and sometimes that can happen too, and, um.
I hear you.
So it's, I mean, be open to it, but I think, um.
You gotta have control on the document.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And, and, and become very inefficient.
Um. Okay, yeah.
I'm, I'm feeling better about everything you're saying.
Okay, good, yeah.
Um, yeah, I'd like to. Give you my, a couple little.
Yeah.
I've gone through this, that in my mind.
Yeah.
I've already broken down.
Yeah.
What W R C does.
Yeah.
We're planning treated that, and I would like to.
Yeah.
Or say it to you and see if you think it makes any sense.
Yeah.
The, under number, I remember them all, each of your bullets, you're like, seven.
Yeah.
Under number one. Dating data.
Mm-hmm.
I think Doc, W R C.
Yeah.
Could do that.
Yeah.
Also, under number one, you mentioned, uh, like, uh, uh, getting, um. Uh, have a meeting with the select board and the road commissioner and highway supervisor.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, a- a- and discuss updates to the plan, I think that could be.
Yeah.
Us, planning commission and you, or whoever, somebody coming to the meeting.
Yeah.
Listening to the brainstorming.
Yeah.
And, and taking it and hopefully use it. That's, that's what I, notes I have in the number one. Under number two.
Um, sorry to interrupt, I forgot, one more thing under number one.
Yes.
Is, um. I forgot to mention, like, the town plan maps.
Yes.
We can.
Update maps.
Update, yeah, we can do that too, and, uh. So that's Jeff Nugent at our office.
Okay, yeah, they.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah, sure, we're missing something, but I'm just saying, okay, so that sounds good, but W R C to update the map. With whatever we do, okay, number two. Candidly, it sounds like. There's not too much to do here.
Yep.
Um, so I'm gonna skip that at the mall.
That's, that's fine, and I, I. I'm comfortable saying.
You, we've.
We've considered it. So.
Number three. Um. Engage the community, we've said that we're really going to.
Hmm.
We, we use the survey for this round, and that potentially you would look at the survey and see what you gleaned, so this would be a combination of. Planning committee and W R C.
Yep.
To create, uh, what we think the survey is telling us.
Yeah.
And, and make sure it's in the plan. That's, that's, that's the third fault, number four. Consider plans consistency. Uh, with statewide plan, it's W R C to me.
Yeah.
Yeah. Under number five, evaluate plan for internal consistency among plan elements. I've got three pieces to this, I've got. W R C.
Mm-hmm.
Looking for consistency or lack of in the plan.
Yeah.
But you've already done that once, so there can't be much left to do.
Yeah.
More other than as we add, if we make any updates, we now make it inconsistent.
Yeah, 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 I think it's more of that, just.[1746.81]
Number two, if, I think the planning commission, now this is where the meat of ours is. If we've read through the plan, and we think something in that plan is just way off. You know, from what our own judgment.
Mm hmm.
Right, regardless of the survey and whatnot, if there's something that we read, oh, that, uh, we know the town's taking a left turn on that.
Yeah.
That we would, we would consider adjusting the plan for that.
Yep.
So number three, the, 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 the flood, the, taking the flood hazard. Mitigation plan, the flood elements, and making sure we've cut and pasted and implemented that into the plan.
Yeah.
And that, I, I might ask W R C to do that.
Yeah, I think that would make sense, and we, I know we worked with, did Margot work on?
Yes, yes, yeah, yes. Perfect, if she's available to do that, or, or somebody else.
Yeah, you could help with that.
Then number six, address compatibility with the regional plan, true plan, W R C.
Yeah.
It tells what we need to change if anything, and number seven, establish a program and schedule implementation plan, can we lean on W R C?
Yeah. And I think, yeah, and I think, and one thing I will, I get the sense, well. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm getting the sense. That Brookline doesn't, uh, they're not necessarily looking for a, a very detailed, extensive implementation plan on it. So, yeah.
Yeah, it would be very high level, yeah. Well, given the few things we have to deal with, it can't be.
Yeah. Yeah.
It will be simple, it is simple.
Yeah. Okay, that, you know.
You know more about Brooklyn than I do, and what's coming down. So the meat of, the meat of what the planning committee is doing, other than reviewing anything you do, or hearing from you, you know, reviewing anything. But the meat of what we're doing is, is, um, you know, that, that planning session with the, uh. With the highway commissioner, the highway supervisor, the select board, and you, or your rep. Kind of going through and seeing from a, from their perspective, what, what should be updated to plan, which I think makes total sense, cuz a lot of it's more covert.
Yes.
Um, a lot of it's segues into, it's having, and then, reading the whole plan and seeing.
Yeah.
Identifying things that we think are way off from where the culture of the town currently is.
Yeah.
If anything.
Yeah.
And I love that because it forces me to read the darn thing.
Yeah.
And to get familiar with it, and as a planning committee, it forces us to. Do that, and that's a, I would call that, that's not a grunt thing.
Yeah.
Right, that's a, that's a totally appropriate level thing for this committee.
Yeah.
To weigh in on.
Yeah.
And, it's something that would be pretty hard to delegate. If we were, and, and all good points, I really, really enjoyed that summary and, and views. If we, is there, would it be appropriate to, of this list of seven items? Uh, put dates down by which certain phases of this are going to be done, so we.
Yeah.
Uh, or a set of guidelines to, to utilize about where we are on the calendar and what, what hap- has to happen.
Yeah, so I think, um. September ninth, and you, the planning commission meets twice a month. Yeah, so I'm just trying, cuz if we're.
We can meet more often. Yeah, yeah, we, we've, we've discussed the possibility of work bees per se, without official meeting, to get some of that grunt work done, and or changes or whatever. Policy decision may have changed or maybe. We can settle for a while, we can go to weekly meeting, we had, right? Yeah, 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 no, Mike is right, at that point, we, we're willing to do that.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just like looking, looking over this, cuz there are some things that should come first, I think, so I think. For me, I would want to, uh, I know we've provided you the data, I took a quick look at the data, but I really. You know, didn't process it much, so I think for me, W R C, we would wanna. Review the data and kind of do some of that narrative update work, cuz there might be something in that data that. Has implications elsewhere in the plan, so that would be, I'm just gonna make a. Little note to myself that, um. Reviewing the survey and summarizing that would be an early on thing too, um. And then also our review for consistency with the, um. Required plan, how enough in statewide planning goals, um. Those are all things I would say to do early on, um, just so we're, we're switching anything. Um, through those items, cuz, um, those are, you know, inform like those in plan. Um, and I'm just kind of thinking a lot, sure, I think doing the work session early on too.
Mm hmm.
Um, would make sense. Some of the other stuff, like the consistency with surrounding towns, that can come towards the end, town plan maps. That can come towards the end, generally, the town plan maps are just, they're just showing information and on a map, um. The only one that has any policy implication really is your future land use plan, and because we're just doing the minimal. We're gonna recommend we don't change that unless there's something in there that the town feels strongly about, so, um. So that, the town plan maps can come towards the end. And then, and then there's kind of work in the middle of, um. Uh, like actually drafting the red line edits for the, um, community profile updates. Bringing in the flood. Excuse me, the flood information from the hazard mitigation plan. Um, and then just making other adjustments here or there in the plan, so I think. Um. I mean, I think realistically. Just trying to think, and I know it might not necessarily, might necessarily be me, but working on it, but, um. But, you know, I think. Probably, probably not the next meeting, but the first meeting in October, I feel like having the, the data, uh. And the community profile narrative updated, having our review of the. Plan element and statewide planning full requirements, and our summary of the survey results. That could all be done by the first meeting in October, um, and I think if we could. Schedule the work session between now and then too. Um, and then. Let's see, if our goal is to have it done, a draft done, like December thirty first. Then I think. Like, October, yeah, I mean, October, November. That, I don't foresee there being a lot of, um. Updates to the plan, so I think like my work of actually writing updates to the plan shouldn't be. Too much, so I think if I can get that done the month of October, and like the first meeting in November, if there's a first draft. Have the plan done, um, and I think, kind of, planning commission. Like at that first meeting in October, we would talk about, like, you know, this is what we see in the community data, this is what we. See in the community survey, um, then I think the planning commission. I would say after that would be the good time to look through the town plan, to read through the goals and policies and see like, okay, based on. You know, what we know about changes in demographics, and what the survey says, you can kind of start thinking about. Um, what the changes are needed, and then, like, maybe after the first meeting in November. That first meeting in November, the planning commission could come back and say, like, we think the policy needs to be reworked, and so. I mean, then, uh, first meeting in December. Focus more on policies, so maybe like the November meeting is more like just content, like background informational content. So I think roughly. That's how I would, I approach it.
So you know what I'm gonna say, if you could just, you know, play that out for us.
Yeah, 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 this is all just me, in my head. Yeah, uh, and, um, I can crunch, like. Crunch numbers, I mean, I don't see this, like, generally, our. Our rate is around, I always check, it's around a hundred dollars, just like the blended rate for time, um. And, I mean.
A little less than I rate, potentially. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's covered, you know, numbers are overhead and all that, and, uh, but I think. You know, I see it as, as like thirty to forty hours of work. So three to four thousand, just. I don't know how that sounds. True.
It sounds better than twenty thousand, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Wow.
I mean, I think.
That seems like, yeah, very valuable fact, like, yeah, I think so.
Yeah, and.
I can, I can pound the table until you get that low. I don't know, it sounded like last night, six hundred and forty-five dollars was blocking. Love, but, uh, I think the three or four thousand would be.
Yeah.
Easily, or, or not, I shouldn't say easily, but, or, we have us, we can find that. We've been sealed, so we can find it.
Yeah, be well worth it. I will. I will, if, 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 if it goes any higher than that, it wouldn't be much higher.
Yeah.
It's just, that's.
We'll deal with that.
But, well, just like, I can, I will, you know, will input this more like in a, like, more in a spreadsheet of. Yeah, this is not. General, like, tasks, and when I would meet with the planning commission, and more estimates for hours, and so. Once I crunch it, like, maybe, I just, if those hours go up slightly, it's just.
I'm not gonna hold you to it.
But I think.
But I, I would love to have something that I can bring to the community next Wednesday.
Yeah, yeah, so I can, I can definitely do that, and I think I can give you. Like a clearer scope of work and the cost proposal, and the select work can review that, and. If they're good with it, then we, we can just do a very simple contract, um, so that. We can get started. Yeah, um, yeah, but, um. Okay, love that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, that's very, very helpful thing, much.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good plan, it seems doable, good, yeah.
I, I, as far as, I, I don't want to speak for anybody else, yeah, if there, there comes a time and you're. Putting this sort of together together, when you feel that.
Yeah.
And, and working, or.
Yeah.
Or, and you felt that the support that you need or the information you need from us.
Yeah.
In a certain area would be, that would be the time to do it.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, please, don't hesitate to make that clear, so.
Yeah.
We're not wasting our time.
Yeah.
Uh, and not being a proper support, even here, which you're making.
Yeah.
For us, that, I wanna be respectful, then maybe.
Yeah, and I can put some more thought into that, cuz I think, um. Um, yeah, maybe, it might, and it might make sense for like, instead of. Waiting, instead of meeting on a monthly basis to meet, right, actually. Twice a month, but to like divide up the, um, instead of giving you all the provisions at once, like divided up.
Wow.
So, I can put some thought into that, uh, and.
Do you need?
Yeah.
Us to have Leah or somebody.
Yeah.
And you that downloaded whatever that word version of that document needs that.
Oh, that would be good, yeah, um, so. Um, yeah.
You don't have it, do you? Yeah, I do, yeah. Oh, you, it's, I, I. You have to download it in Word? Uh, yeah, I, I believe I did, I looked at it this morning, as a matter of. Oh, okay. So it's, it's there, and it, it can be done.
Okay.
And not only that, I have the ability. It may be the fastest thing. Convert it to, exactly, that's just what I'm making, I could send it to you tomorrow, my first thing, not today. Is it in Word, or, or is it? It's in Word. Oh, it's in Word, yeah, okay, yeah, so that would be fastest thing. Sure, yeah.
Yeah.
That over here, you got that in your hands.
Yeah.
It's in Word.
Yeah.
And, I think what we decided was, you're the controller of the document.
I think that's, yeah, um, I think that's the best way to do it.
Yeah, okay.
But as we get into it, we come up with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, you know, the last one, you don't want me messing around. Fully like name, knows what they're doing. Lady, not a, not a lady, or.
No, no.
You know what she's doing, you know, this, this, I'm standing there, still like. I'll make it work, decent effort. I'll make the whole thing disappear. I've done that, that is on again.
Hey, yeah, I have some horror stories.
I need Tom report.
Documents getting re-formatted, and then having to spend hours and hours. Yeah, okay, well, this sounds good, and I will, in the next couple days, put something together. Send it back to you all.
Thank you.
Uh, you can let me know if it doesn't make sense, if I missed anything. But I think I have your direction, um, so that's helpful.
So theoretically, we don't record, right, so if you're number five, we can't take any, we don't, can't, but need to take any votes.
Correct.
If, if, if you had a quarrel, we, we'd take a vote on what we just said, but, yeah. It's even possible to set an agenda, given the, the content of the discussion for the next meeting on the twenty, twenty-third of September. Uh, actually, without a form, I'm not sure we could take a vote on that, other than just putting in thoughts and feelings, but. I think what Matt's gonna provide is, is gonna be a strong influence on what we're gonna be doing. Yeah, yeah, I think he's gonna be controlling a lot of our agendas for.
Yeah.
And I know. Or somebody. I think that's gonna be actually for us, the most effective way, you know, that just tells us, this is, this is what I need, this is what you gotta do, and.
Yeah.
And, and that's fine with me, and it's great. Yes, my question would be, should we add meetings? Through the, through the, right now, to the cal- our calendars, even, and we can cancel them if there's nothing to. Do, but it's always harder, you know, cuz, cuz we wanna keep Matt and his people being as efficient as possible, right?
Yeah.
So, if he wants to.
Yeah.
Check in something with us.
Yeah. Well, I think, uh, cuz I know, I know. I have another, this, this part gets tricky, cuz I have other meetings, but I have, I have a meeting on September twenty-third. I don't have anything. October, let's see, so into October, you would be being. October fourteenth and the twenty-eighth. Which.
Don't have a calendar in front of me, but.
Um.
If that's the case, that's the case. And if you're available.
Those days are, yeah, those days are. Good for me, so I can put that in my calendar, the October fourteenth and twenty-eighth. Um.
And that, that would leave the twenty-third that we have typically utilized for some work.
Yeah.
As a work bees, per se, if that.
Yeah.
Unless something else is present from a planning perspective.
Yeah, I mean, I think, um, if, if the planning mission wanted to on the twenty-third, I mean, you, you could. Start your own cap review of, yeah, and kind of start reading through the plan.
Yes.
Before then, and go through it, as, like, come to the meeting. Having read the plan and kind of go, have comments, um, more on like that, right, high level.
Yeah, and.
Policies, just.
Every week. I mean, the plan is, what is it, like fifty-five pages? I honestly forgot, I didn't know at one time, I was thirty-six, but then I might be thinking, but hazard mitigation. Maybe hazard mitigation, but, uh, you know, even if we, on the twenty-third, if we had same way review, uh, what's the plan?
Yeah. Yeah, or you can also, like, divide it up, of, like, everyone takes two chapters, or it's like, everyone should read through it, and kind of assign. One person to. Look more closely.
Sounds good.
Um. Yeah. Um, and then, in the November, I know, November eleventh is. A holiday, Veterans Day is a Tuesday.
Well, you're gonna put together.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're gonna put this together for us, and, and that should tell us.
Yeah.
Dates your target and do something, we should, uh, make that on our agendas. Try to nominate accordingly, and how to schedule services. And we should add, you know, you should feel free to have us add meetings.
Yes. Mm hmm.
That sound alright, Stan? Something you need that, like, you're, I think you're, you had a good. Sound, I get my juice flowing. Yeah, yeah. I can drag in my heels, you got me psyched.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because I have a sense now of.
Yeah.
Of what to do.
Yeah. That is, yeah, often the hardest part, it's just.
Yeah, it's just, it's this big black hole for.
Yeah.
Yeah, it enables a, a degree of focus to be applied with the.
Yeah.
Help that you're providing, it wouldn't be lacking, otherwise, I suspect. Would take us longer to, to attain.
Yeah. Okay. Cool.
And I don't know if this would be of help to you, but.
Yeah.
Uh, we're recording this with a translation ability.
Oh.
I don't know if you've dealt with that.
An AI, or.
Um, well, I'm not sure what is, I think it's part of the Zoom.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
If, if you've used that, and my sending you tomorrow, that, I think it's, the last letters are T T on it, B T T.
Yeah.
Uh, and you, and you have used it, or will be helpful?
Be helpful, yeah.
Okay, so I send you that as well with.
I took, took good notes, but it's always big.
Yeah, he uses it, but it'll be five days before she gets minutes done.
Yeah.
And I know she's not letting everything go through, she's.
Yeah.
Um, editing, so to speak, so there may be things that she doesn't put importance on, that will be important to you, so.
Yeah.
I can, I can send you that along.
Okay.
At least you can do, I'm writing everything off.
Stan, do you want to, uh? I don't know, is it, whether, uh, ask that, uh, at the twenty-third meeting that we. Try to, try to have read parts of the plan.
I think that would be a wonderful idea, come and discuss it as a group with a particular focus on.
What's seems way out of whack.
Yeah.
Is there anything that seems way out of whack?